Okay, so it is six thirty-nine. So let's call this regular board meeting of trustees to order. So we're going to not do the salute to the flag?
There just won't be a flag video.
Oh, okay. So I guess if we can say the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag in the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much for everyone's time and their patience. I definitely appreciate it. If we can take a moment to accept the minutes for the meeting. Are there any corrections to the meeting, to the minutes as published? Hearing none, minutes are accepted. There is no correspondence, there's no changes to the agenda at this time. Sheila can, and we'd like to do the report or the financial report. Sheila, can you give us that report?
The board electronically received, reviewed, and audited, and approved all invoices from May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, through June tenth, two thousand and twenty. I posted the claims audit approval in chat. If you could please post your approval, members of the board. The board received the revenue and budget status reports through April. These reports were previously distributed electronically. We've seen a shortfall in revenue, in library charges, and other unclassified. We will see balances in the following expenditure lines. Maintenance and large equipment repair, electric and gas, materials and salary budget lines. We're seeing a forty thousand dollar shortfall in our medical hospital benefit line. And there has been no update since the May twenty-seventh board meeting on bank statements, which are up to date through April and are available for board review. Thank you.
Okay. Who reviewed the invoices for today's meeting? I know that I reviewed. Was there anyone else?
I reviewed them.
Okay. So can we have a recommendation for the board to authorize the payment of invoices, May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, to June tenth, two thousand and twenty?
I thought, I thought that's what we just did in the chat. Did Sheila ask for approval in the chat?
Yeah.
That's in lieu of signing the warrant. So now we need to say, okay, I, and take your vote.
All motion.
Is there a second?
Second, Kay.
Okay, all those in favor? And I. Motion carries. For the president's report. I guess in light of things that are going on in our community with systemic racism rearing its ugly head and folks out in the community supporting African Americans. I think that it's important that we take this time to recognize racism is a systemic issue. There are laws and policies and procedures that have been at play for a very, very long time that impact us individuals as people of color. And I just want to take this time to ask people to stop and consider our efforts. It's insidious, it creeps in. We see it every day without even recognizing behaviors, thoughts, and actions. And the library is a place where we, where people come to unite and educate and we just come together to be holistic. And so I want to encourage everyone to continue to be open-minded, evaluate your unconscious biases that may, you may not have realized previously, and continue to be receptive. This is a moment of growing pains for this nation amongst a pandemic. So I wanted to speak on it. It's been a very difficult process for me to go through. I don't want to spend a lot of time on it because I don't feel as though I can articulate my words. I have a lot of problems right now just articulating the unjustness of it all in the progress. So I just wanted to bring it up. I want everyone to take a moment to, like I said, evaluate their unconscious biases and make changes and adjustments accordingly. I know that we at the library will continue to support the community. There is literature out there in regards to making changes and improving the lives of those that are around us and are impacted. And whatever we can do, I definitely would like to hear comments from the community. I would like to even have possible discussions in order to improve and heal our community. So maybe with programming moving forward, we can consider that. But I just wanted to take the time to make mention. With that, I'd like to move on to.
Denise, can I comment a little bit?
Sure.
I love your comments, and I think we need to maybe take it a step further, if it's all right. We, as school librarians, started to look at, you know, what is it we need to do? And we're conducting an analysis of our collections to be sure that they're reflective of all of our patrons, all of our constituents. And I wonder, you know, there's different ways to do that. And right now, I'm just talking about the actual collections in the library, and certainly you mentioned the programming. But I wondered if Glenn or Susan, if that would be possible, to do a collection analysis on our materials? And are we, are we up to date? Are we, is our collection diverse? Is it representative of authors across the color spectrum? Is that something we could do?
Yes, absolutely is something that we can do. And I think programming-wise, I think Liverpool has provided a lot of diverse programs, but we can always do better, as they say, and look in other ways that we can expand our programming to, as Denise says, reflect more of the community as it's changing. So we certainly can do both of those. Look at the collection, promote the collection. We've already got librarians working on some reading lists and viewing lists of items that are available, not only at Liverpool, but that they would be able to get from other libraries in the system. OCPL printed quite an extensive list in the paper on Sunday of materials that are available system-wide. We're working on our own list in Liverpool. Also, I ask librarians, New York Public Library has a nice reading and viewing list from their Schaumburg Center for Research on Black Culture that they call the Schaumburg Center's Black Liberation Reading List. So we, I had staff go through to see which of those titles we have. Do we need to buy any of those titles? And those are all getting prepped, and those lists will be up on our website, hopefully in the next couple of days. So those are just some of the very small steps that we're taking right now that we're able to do under the current situation.
Great.
Okay, so other than mentioning that, as far as my report, I thought I'd let you know we're on, not quite day ten, I guess it's more like day eight of curbside pickup. It seems to be going quite well. I had a few statistics from Katie Whitney. She said, so far, we've had three hundred and eighty-three patrons come through and pick up their items. Just this week alone, June eighth through today, we've had a hundred and nineteen pickups. So it's going very well. It's quite the undertaking, a lot more than we anticipated. I think in the connecting with the patron piece, it's taking, from what I hear from staff, an average of about ten minutes per phone call with these patrons to call them. And, you know, what they focused on first were the items that were on the shelf when we closed in March. So you're calling the patron, you're telling them, these things were on hold for you. Do you still want them? Yes or no, and this and that. And then they have to go back and forth and then set up their appointment. So they're being very thorough. I think the patrons are absolutely loving, engaging with the staff. And I think things are moving along well, but we'd like to be able to get things moving, I think, a little bit faster. So keeping in mind safety of staff and patrons, we're looking at how we can possibly bring more staff in during the day to to move this along. Because we had two thousand and some items that were in quarantine that needed to be shelved. It's hard to find items off a hold list if they, list if they haven't been shelved yet. There's all these little things that need to be addressed. So I would say, for the most part, it's going very well. I think we should be, be very pleased that our patrons have embraced this as quickly as they can. And then we're working on how we can better facilitate and get things in our patrons' hands a little bit more timely. Also coming up, June twenty-ninth will be the kickoff for summer reading. So they're working on how to manage patron pickup of their kits and information that they're going to be getting for that. So that's another piece that's being incorporated into all of this right now. I don't know if anybody's got any questions about the curbside pickup. I know Don said he went through on Saturday, and it seemed to go very smoothly. If you haven't been through our garage, even if you don't need anything, you might want to drive through and just see the directional signage. It's beautiful and very clear, which makes it much easier for a patron, especially anyone who's nervous about driving in a parking garage. So I don't know if anybody's got any questions about that.
I love the fact that your summer reading program is from, you know, birth to ninety-nine.
Yes. And I think the general sentiment I'm hearing from other library directors, and the same with Liverpool, is they want to make it fun. They know that parents have been home teaching their children for what's going on three months. They have to manage one more piece of reading and documenting and things like that. They're just not, they're just not into it. So I think Joellen and her team and the rest of the summer reading crew have worked very hard to come up with something that's a little bit more, has a fun element to it, has activities that will get you outside with your kids, things of that nature. So I was happy to hear that. I wanted to let the board know that we are going to try to recoup some of our costs for supplies and incidentals that were purchased to open the building up for staff and for patrons. FEMA is willing to reimburse some of those expenses. We have to submit that, like, you know, anything else. Minimum amount you can ask for is thirty-three hundred. I think when all is said and done, you add everything up, we'll be, we'll be able to submit that and then maybe a little bit more. I don't have a final list. We probably won't have that for a couple of weeks. But when you think about, you know, the Plexi and the cleaning supplies and the PPE and the furniture cubicle divider panels that we had to have installed upstairs and all of the things that we had to do to make the building safe in order to go back to work, I think we'll be well within that benchmark of thirty-three hundred dollars. So I wanted the board to be aware of that. System-wide, Baldensville and OCPL in Central opened up on the twenty-sixth. Liverpool and Salve and Lafayette opened June one. We had a couple of other libraries, Nople and maybe Anfree opened on the eighth. And the rest of the libraries in the system are all going to open up for curbside service on the fifteenth. So that will, I think, be a good first step. Friday, I believe they're announcing, the county is going to announce phase three. And if things go along the way they have so far, we can probably expect phase four, maybe about two weeks after that. So I plan to get my team together to start talking about patrons in the building, probably sometime shortly after the Fourth of July holiday. How that will happen and how many people and all of that still is yet to be worked out. Will we do it by appointment? Will we do it by, you know, the way Trader Joe's does it, where you got to wait outside, and when somebody leaves, you can come in? I really don't want to have to do that because I think we'll have an issue with people coming in and staying, and I don't want people having to wait outside. So we're working all of that out, how many computers we can use, how long they will use them, how will we check out materials, where can people sit? There's a whole nother set of issues that we will have to address in order to allow patrons back in the building. So that is what our next focus is going to be. That's about it I have for you, unless anyone has any questions.
I think that you can do it. I believe in you. You are creative.
I believe in us too, and I have such a great team. And I think they want to do it. I think we need to make sure we've got a good handle on our collections right now with this curbside and that we've got things in place and then all of these other issues addressed. So I will certainly keep the board abreast of anything as we move forward with that. So the last thing I was going to mention, just quickly, I'm sure you all know about the vote, that we can't touch the ballots, or the school district, I guess, cannot begin to count ballots until five o'clock on the sixteenth. And then something came out late today, too, about allowing school districts for a revote if they, if a budget doesn't pass. And I have to go back, I'm sorry, I looked at it very late. And I can forward it to you if you haven't seen it. But I believe that a revote cannot happen before July ninth. Not that we'd be ready for that, but, so that's another, another piece. But apparently, there were fifteen school districts in the state that were trying for a budget that was above the tax cap. So I guess they're anticipating some issues with that. So that's all I know about that right now.
Thank you very much. And the OCPL report, anything from the OCPL?
Other than all the libraries opening up on the fifteenth, we did have a visit on Monday from Christian Zabriski. He's the director at OCPL. He is trying to get out and visit all the member libraries and kind of see if, see how we're doing things, but also some of these smaller libraries that are just getting on board and trying to open. I think he's trying to offer assistance if they need it on how they can best open up their curbside, you know, with a small facility and very few staff. So we did have a visit from him on Monday.
Thank you.
Yep.
Items for action and discussion. The first one is personnel. I'd like to have a motion to accept the personnel list as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, was that Mary Shapley?
Yes, it is. I can't get my picture up there, but I'm here.
That's all right.
Go back, Martina.
That's me, I'm S C H A.
Oh, okay, who was, who made the motion?
John.
I did.
John made the motion, I seconded it.
Thank you.
Do you want to go back just one?
Yeah, go back, there you go.
There you go.
Sorry, trying to do too many things at once, okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one is the repeal of property tax cap override. Is there a motion to repeal a property tax cap override?
So moved, that's Kay.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. We need a board nominating committee for twenty-twenty-one officers. I need two trustees to be on the committee to nominate officers for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, excuse me.
I'll do it.
Mary? Was there anyone else?
Last year, it was me and Yvette did it.
And the year before, I think I did it, and I can't remember who I was with, but.
No, I think you and I did it.
Well, that's right. You're right.
You did a good job. You did a good job. You could do it again, right?
Yeah.
If Mary's willing to have me, I will do it with her.
Yeah, that's fine.
I can, I can be involved, too, if you, if you're busy, Kay.
No, John, go for it. You haven't done it, you do it.
I'm going to do it.
All right.
Awesome, thank you so very much. Okay.
Does the committee report back at the next meeting?
Yes. Well, you should contact who you feel should be what office position, and are they going to accept it?
Before the next meeting, so we know when we walk in there that they will accept it.
I think what she was saying is, I think you have this discussion, you talk with whoever, and if they're going to accept whatever off positions. And then at the reorganization meeting, I think you accept those positions, accept those people in those positions. Does that make sense?
Right. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Sorry, Martini, you froze up there for a minute.
That's okay, no problem.
Thank you. So these are the listings of the twenty-twenty-one closing calendar. If we can have a motion to accept the twenty-twenty-one closing calendar for the first reading as presented?
All motion, it's Ashley.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Go ahead, Mary's fine.
Any discussion?
Yes, can we make this the only closings next year? Forget about this other crazy stuff?
Always, yes.
So one note, the union asked today if we could add Sunday, December twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. And that would be the same as the day before Memorial Day. It would not be a paid holiday for staff. If any staff are regularly scheduled on a Sunday, they would use personal time.
So they would like the day after Christmas, is that Sunday?
Yeah, it's a Sunday, yep.
So they asked for it today, it was not time enough for me to redo everything, I'm sorry.
Do we normally have a lot of patrons the day after? It's kind of hard.
We were not, well, we were, we could, we could look. I mean, we can see if we've got any, any people counter numbers for those days. This is just a first reading, and we can report back to you next, next month. I don't know. I don't, I'm trying, I'm thinking it's kind of quiet.
Yeah.
I know that there's programming. There usually is programming on Boxing Day.
They do Boxing Day program, you're right. That's very popular. Didn't think about that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor, so we either have to vote it or vote it up or vote it down, I guess, in order to move forward.
So those that are in favor? Any opposed?
I'm a little confused. So with this proposal that just came in today, are we, are we deciding not to?
I don't.
I think as, the calendar as presented, if we are approving, and this is only the first reading, so currently, if I'm wrong, but we would, we should have another opportunity to evaluate and review this calendar.
Yes, next month.
So you can, I mean, it's on the table, you can either approve or disapprove, and then next month, we're going to have additional information.
Right, and we will either have that Sunday on it, or maybe they'll have reconsidered it when they remember that this is a pretty popular program they have the day after, so, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So I think you have to call the vote again, Denise, so I think we had some confusion there.
Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Were there any oppositions?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. The ALA Bill of Rights Policy for Second Reading and a Final Approval. May I have a motion to approve the ALA Bill of Rights Policy for Second Reading and Final Approval as presented?
So moved.
Second, Kay.
Is there a discussion? I think that previously, we said that these are pretty much standard across the board.
Any changes that would come to them would come from ALA. This is their bill of rights. So this is basically our Liverpool library
Adopting it.
following and adopting the ALA policies. So no changes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. ALL Freedom to View Policy for Second Reading and Final Approval. May I have a motion for the approval of the ALA Freedom to View Policy for Second Reading and Final Approval as presented?
So moved.
I'll second, Ashley.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
There are still two others, Code of Ethics.
Oh, did I?
Yeah.
I skipped them, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Code of Ethics and Freedom to Read, sorry.
Code of Ethics and which other one did I?
Freedom to Read.
Number five and eight?
Yes, seven, five and seven.
Five and seven, okay. May I have a motion to accept the ALL ALA Code of Ethic Policy for Second Reading and Final Approval as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
John seconds.
Any discussion? All those in favors?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And then the ALL Freedom to Read Policy for Second Reading and Final Approval. May I have a motion to approve the ALA Freedom to Read Policy for Second Reading and Final Approval as presented?
Ashley will motion.
Is there a second?
John seconds.
John's got it.
Any discussion?
Yes, I actually do. I went back to reread this. I went back to reread this, because this one, this one to me doesn't read like a policy. This one to me, and it says it right in the title, American Library Association's Freedom to Read Statement. And if you go down to Section Four, and in Section Four, and I'll just read it for you in case it's not in front of you, I want to read you this the first statement, and there's an explanation. The statement says, "There's no place in our society for efforts to coerce the taste of others, to confine adults to reading matter deemed suitable for adolescents, or to inhibit efforts of writers to achieve artistic expression." I love that, here's what concerns me. It says to some, "Much of modern expression is shocking, but it is not much of life itself shocking." It's reading to me, not so much as a policy, but kind of an observation of society. So, I guess, I, I question, I question the narrative under each one of the points, because the narrative seems to be someone's opinion, like, too much, to some expression is shocking, that's, that's an opinion, that's, that's not a policy statement, I believe. So, I'm curious to hear what your opinions are.
I, I have to say that I agree with that, in regards to it being more of a statement of someone else's, but I don't know necessarily, and I guess I would lean on Glenna to, to, to know how, if this is taken from, directly from ALA, then what would be, what opportunities do we have to make any changes?
I, I, that's a good question, I don't, I don't know.
It is taken directly from ALA. I'm sure there is an avenue that, if the board wanted to draft a letter of concern, that we could certainly get it to them, I, I mean, we're reviewing it now, I don't know the last time this particular policy was updated, is there a date to see?
Yeah, there is, at the very bottom, I went to look, and it was updated in 2004.
Yeah, I think it needs to be updated. I mean, that's, that's a long time. So, um, let me do a little bit of digging tomorrow to find out what our avenue would be if we had some concerns as a board about this particular policy and, and updating it, because I mean, we're doing our thing every three years, accepting this, you know, as you said, policy, yet, nothing's changed in it, and...
I, I guess, I guess for me, it's the policy itself, the statements, the statement, the prefix to each of the narratives seems sound, you know, I, I think they're, they, they lay out why you put this in the policy. It's the narrative underneath. You know, it's the narrative that they go and they, and they, I understand they're giving a justification for it, but it seems to me that doesn't belong in the policy. What belongs in the policy is the actual statement of, 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 you know, that we're affirming the propositions. The narrative underneath seems to me like it's, it's the interpretation of it, but it's done, it's written so that it appears as an opinion. And again, maybe that's, I, I, can you go back and take a look? I just, I would feel more comfortable if we looked at that a little closer, so...
Would it be possible to have just the actual policy portion in?
I think that's logical, I think that's logical Denise, I think that makes sense to me.
Well, it's, it, yeah, I mean, and if you go back up, it's our policy, but they refer to it as a statement.
They do.
So...
But it's not written as a policy, it's written as a statement. So, and, so is it a policy at ALA, or is it just, is it a statement, and, and where is, what is the definition there, what's the nuance between a policy and a statement?
Right, and I'm wondering if, does Liverpool Library want to have their own Freedom to Read Policy that incorporates elements of the ALA Freedom to Read Statement? That would be an, an approach.
I think that's, I think that sounds logical, I like, I like the way you think on that.
Okay. So, so my recommendation would be you not accept the second, the second reading, and we table this and, and have a discussion on, you know, and, and I guess, I will work on a library Freedom to Read Policy that incorporates the Freedom to Read Statement in it.
Yeah, you know, I think that makes sense, Glenna.
Okay.
This whole thing, and, and the other piece I wanted to point out there was, in the initial introductory paragraph, they begin with a quote, but they don't necessarily end the quote. I don't even know where that's coming from, it's not cited anywhere in the document, so, I believe. So, again, so if, if we're gonna take, take this apart, let's take it apart and make it grammatically correct, let's make it our own.
Okay.
That's, that's my feeling.
Okay.
I like the idea of going, there would be an avenue to express, I mean, this is a great discussion, to express concern with the policy. I think in the past, we've just felt obligated to adopt the policy, you know, as it's presented. And I guess there's no reason that the library has to do that, I guess there is no reason.
No.
But I, but I, I think that, from what I'm hearing, the, the concern is really an important concern, and we should express that concern through that avenue that, that you mentioned, assuming that there is that avenue that, you know, yeah, I think that, just to go, rather than just go ahead and have our own, we ought to be able to say that we have, why are we doing that? We're doing that because we have some problems with it, and we've expressed those problems to whatever the avenue is, or the, the office is.
Okay.
So it might take some time to do that before we actually go ahead and adopt our own policy.
Right. Okay.
So we need a vote now.
So, I think that, um, okay, so all those that are in favor? All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, so motion carries. Sorry, excuse me, motion?
Second reading is rejected.
Is rejected, thank you Kay, the second reading is rejected. So, the last item on the agenda is grants, and I touched bases with Glenna just a little bit, because I wanted to see if we could start a discussion in regards to grants for the library, seeking out opportunities to increase funding, I think that this is a, a good opportunity to maybe just start the discussion, and then if, and when we can start maybe identifying some grants moving forward. Glenna can bring them to us, then we can discuss them, or, or at least evaluate the, the prospect of bringing those additional funds to the library. So, I, I ask for that to be added to the, the agenda. Does anybody have any comment, or anything they want to say in regards to that?
Do you?
I'm sorry Kay.
That's right. I was just wondering if you had identified some grants that you, of particular interest, or?
I, I don't, and that's why I wanted to bring the, the discussion to the board, was in thoughts of just reviewing, I do get a an update from Minority Health, and I thought maybe just in regards to maybe some programming, that maybe we could, I don't know, start looking at the grants that would support that, so, I think that's really where, would spark the idea, and not necessarily knowing what avenue or the process to take in order to get this moving. I wanted to present it here, and see, you know, is this something that we all want to kind of go out and get some suggestions? A way to, to, to at least get the, get it moving forward.
I like the idea of having a periodic report to the board, we've talked about grants in the past, we're gonna apply for a grant for this, or a grant for that. But, I, I like the idea of having a, a periodic report to the board of what grants have been approved, what grants are in process, and what grants are we looking at, you know, just get an idea of what the board is aware of. It's a very important topic, and I think it's, it's great to be on the agenda. We're gonna have some kind of a status report. You know, the ones that have been approved in this current fiscal year, you know, description, what are in process, and what are we thinking about in terms of, of grants for the future.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to do that, in, in the past, I've tried to put any grant information that was relevant at the time in my written report, but I can certainly, you know, report out here as well.
Yeah.
So, right now, I have submitted an intent to apply, which is just a very brief application to OCPL, intent to apply for the upcoming New York State Library Construction Grant. We are looking at possibly funding di- digital infrared people counter that would be a more accurate count of people coming in and out of the building, but they also have that added element of letting you know when you're at capacity in certain rooms, or getting near capacity in certain rooms. And that, I think in light of, of the restrictions that we have, and we don't know for how long going forward, you know, with COVID and, and everything else, might be something worth adding to the library. We have light beam people counters on three of our doors, and they're not accurate, so get a real sense of how many people are coming and going in and out of the building. So that is one that is very, very, very first stages, and the money this year from state, the state obviously is very limited, I don't know how many other libraries in the county are also applying for construction grant money, so, as soon as I know whether we can go forward with this one, I will let you know. We are also waiting for our money to come to us from last year's grant, which was the children's room renovation. So we submitted that construction money, and should be getting reimbursed about a hundred and eighty-three thousand, I think is the amount, from last year, but we have not, we have not seen the check yet, so we, so we have that one. And then every year, we always have our New York, our Central New York Arts Grant that funds our concerts, and our staff have been very good this year in getting several ALA grants for, you know, small amounts of money, but some of them up to $500 to fund programming. I know Cindy Hibbert has utilized one with a couple of local history presenters, Tom Henry, and I, I can't remember who else, so. So we are always looking, we're trying to pitch those things out. We don't always qualify for all the grants that are out there, because we're not a 501(c)(3). So, it may look like there's a lot of money out there, but then we're not always eligible, so. Back years ago, when we had a friends group, I believe they were a 501(c)(3), so you could kind of funnel things through them, and we do not have that option right now, so.
And I think that that is kind of some of the information or discussion that I want to have. Just because I think that, you know, as things come across, it seems as though it may be something that we might be able to integrate. And if we all, you know, just bring it to the table for further evaluation or discussion, then, you know, this is a space that we can have that, you know, that, you know...
Sure, and, and, and you all may see things come across your, your desk, an email or whatever, that I might not see, and I'm happy to have them, you know, send them on to me and say, is this something that we could do, and, you know, we'll certainly explore it.
Thank you Glenna, I appreciate it. Give me a quick second, we're going into open forum, if anyone in attendance would like to address the board? I think that it's just us here.
Oh, there I am, okay. I do have one thing that, I'm sorry, I meant to put in my report that we discussed last month, and I wanted to revisit it with you, and I'm sorry that it fell off my list. The, we, I had brought up last month the possibility of waiving fines for the remainder of the year. There's a couple of libraries that have done it. I asked for an update from the member library directors today, you know, where they're at. A couple of them said that their board is not going forward with that because of the current fiscal situation. One said that they were gonna go forward with it, but plan on reinstating fines January 1. So it's kind of, you know, across, across the board, I think, you know, to me, if we are going to, we, we have already decided we're eliminating fines on kids' materials, that, that's done, so what we're talking about is adult anything that would fall under the adult material category. In my mind, I would be okay with waiving fines on books and yeah, I would not want to waive the fines on some of our higher cost items, which tend to fall in our library of things, which are our musical instruments, our park passes, things of that nature. So, I don't know whether that's something you want to consider. We do put in the budget, I think revenue line, was it about forty thousand for fines? We are not going to make that this year, obviously, from July of last year to... Yes. Oh, did, what, did somebody interrupt, oh. We had the ransomware in the summer of last year, and now we are dealing with this no-fine period across the county because of the closing of the libraries. So I think right now, it looks like from the latest report run, we're at about nineteen thousand, just shy of twenty thousand revenue for fines, and we've got two weeks left in this budget year, so obviously we are not going to be making that revenue this year. From fines. So, I, I'm throwing this all at you, again, the fines have been waived across the board until July. So we do have a little bit more time to think about it. I can send you more information, if you want more information. You know, that's up to the board, if you want to decide tonight, we can decide tonight.
I think that we were, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, looking for additional information in regards to the anticipated costs for that, and I think that we were still, I think we hadn't decided whether or not we were doing the park passes, or what all was included, so, I think you're saying that for us this year to do that, it'll be that nineteen thousand?
That's where we're at right now, so, I mean, that's what we've taken in this year so far, is nineteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and change. We're not gonna, we're not gonna be taking in anymore, other than if somebody has totally lost or destroyed an item after July 1, when we start, start up with, you know, charging people again, we will be charging for lost or damaged items. This would strictly be waiving late fees. This would strictly be waiving late fees for the remainder of the year.
And I think that we were okay with that, and the group definitely speak up. I think that we were okay with that. Like I said, I, I think that we were still questioning about the musical equipment and the park passes, but I think, well, I know you're saying no, we won't include that. This would be just the books. And so I think that that's okay for me. And my thought, if anybody else has anything that they want to weigh in, I think at least till January. Is that what?
I'm sorry. Sorry Denise. My question was, what's in the budget for next year for this category?
For revenue for the, the fines?
Correct.
33,000.
33,000.
Okay, and if we were to approve this for the media, the books only, what would the anticipated shortfall in that revenue item be for next year?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I had the figures here that we found for you. I don't know if you-
Go ahead Susan.
We couldn't use last year's 2019 figures because of being closed for the renovation and the ransomware. Those numbers were just totally out of the norm.
But if we looked at 17 and 18-
You were looking, that would be for a whole year around 27 and it averaged between 27 and 29,000.
And, and remember, you've already said you're waiving fines on the children's, which is approximately, those two years averaging around 5,000.
Well, that's the reason we went from down to 33,000. That's, that was the $7,000.
Right.
Reduction for next year compared to, not this current fiscal year for the reasons that Susan mentioned.
Right.
But for the prior year. So, so the 33,000 takes into account the, the loss of revenue on the children's fines. And my question is, what is, what does the 30, what, what does it look like if we were to eliminate the fines that have been proposed? How far down does the 30, I'm just asking, what would, what would be the anticipated shortfall in the 33,000 dollars? I think we ought to know that before we approve this. It's a feel-good decision.
Right. And if it's for the rest of the year and you, you know, decide January 1, we're gonna start charging the fines again for adult books and media, I think that, you know, that sounds like what some other libraries are gonna be doing. So it would be for, you know, July 1 through December 31st. So we can crunch those numbers?
Yeah, we don't need a precise number. I'm just, magnitude.
Okay.
Spend a lot of time on it, but I just think we ought to know where, where is that money, you know, we're gonna lose that revenue, so, you know, is that insignificant? So we could do it, we feel good doing it, and we'll do it, but.
Okay.
And another question, just along that same lines, is that, that average for the 27 to 29,000 a year, does that include the music, the musical instruments and the park?
That's everything.
Yeah.
That's children's, that's all our, our entire collection that we would, that circulates. So yes.
So, so would it be possible, or would it be, would you be able to tease out how much of that is related to books? Because that's all we would be taking out of this portion, correct?
Well, books, books and media, so DVDs, audiobooks.
Okay.
We can see if we can break that down.
If possible. If not, then.
Okay.
If we, if we just wanted to ballpark a couple of figures here, and I'm just going on what the numbers that you guys were throwing out. Susan said that from the year that she quoted, it was about 27,000 dollars. And if we look, that we have seven months of the year left, July through, well, I guess it'd be six months. You're, you're talking, you know, roughly half of that if, if every month is equal. And I don't know that circulation or fines of every month are equal. So you're talking about roughly like, you know, 14,000 dollars, 14 to 15,000 dollars in fines that we would lose. So, in my mind, I'm weighing that 14 or 15,000 dollars against the, the, the weight of that on our community. You know, the community's been hit hard, and we want to entice our patrons back. We want them to, you know, say, hey, oh yeah, the library's open again, I want to go. Their lives have changed. There's a new normal. Schedules are wacky because people are out of work and, you know, school remains to be seen in September. So the normal pattern of going to the library and picking up materials and bringing them back, that's not gonna be in our near future. That, that's, that's a distance off. I mean, we, we don't know how to predict any of that. So, I'm gonna go on record as saying, I think it sounds logical. I think it sounds logical to eliminate fines. You know, and I would like those numbers confirmed, but, you know, right now, I'm handing out books out of my library to give kids for summer reading, you know, with the expectation that they're gonna come back in the fall and we're, you know, no, we, of course, we don't charge fines, but I think our goal is to get reading into the community. We, to give them the comfort, to give them that arsenal of a democratic culture that we, you know, we pass these policies on, that we, we buy those materials for, that we do the programming for, for our whole community. So, there's my soapbox. I stood on it, and, you know, the, the hard numbers would be great, but I want, I'm gonna go on record now that I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
I didn't realize that fines were that significant, a determining factor in whether, you know, I mean, a dollar, $2, $5, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
It can be a barrier. You know, it's seen as a barrier. A lot of libraries that have gotten rid of fines altogether have claimed that their actual monetary donations have gone up. But when you think about, you know, the cost of the materials versus the fines, if people have fines, they're like, they won't even return things sometimes because they're embarrassed.
Yeah.
There's a, it's a, it's a barrier for a lot of people. But we will crunch those numbers a little bit more and see if we can get something a little more concrete for you. The other compromise that was brought up, I, I don't know whether it was Martina or somebody else, said that you could waive fines until, you know, the beginning of school. So that would give you the summer fine free. So, you know, I mean, that's an option too. But I think to the end of December kind of makes sense because that's what some of the other libraries are doing. And, and, and it, I only say that because then it's less confusing for patrons. If, if there's kind of a consistent message across the board on some of these things from library to library, especially if somebody is visiting Balden'sville and Nopal Libraries and Liverpool, we're all kind of doing similar things, it makes more sense.
And can I just say from a logistical standpoint, like, we don't know what the fall is going to bring. It may very well be that we are back in this same situation again, and so we're waiving fines anyway. You know, at least, I work in higher ed. We're talking about whether we're going to have people back on campus in the fall. And if we do, what, you know, it's very possible to end up again like we, we have now. And I, I agree with Kay, and additionally, like, as a, as a mom of two young kids, like, logistics plays into it for me. So, before all this, I could easily just stop at the library, drop my stuff off, don't have to, you know, I didn't have to worry. I had more flexibility. But if we're talking, you know, I now have to worry about getting my kids home. I can't bring both of them into the library. The little one won't keep her mask on, you know, now I have to make sure that my husband's home before I can bring my, my books back. And so it's just a whole bunch of more complexities in my life trying to get my materials back. And if I do have to worry about fines on top of that, you know, that's additional barriers for me. So, just something to think about there too.
Thank you everyone. I appreciate that feedback. Okay, I guess that's pretty much the board forum as well. I did it again.
I got something. If you look on our LPL website or the Liverpool Central School District website today, you will see that we have a guest reader from the Liverpool Public Library. Our very own director, Glenna, is reading to children. So if you haven't seen the video, you should definitely go check it out. Laurel Sharp also, are you bringing it up Martina? Laurel, there she is. And Laurel Sharp is also one of our readers. Dr. Potter is one of our readers and one of our school librarians. So, and on Friday, we have the big reveal of the 2020 Bresnahan Award. And this is my grand dog you're looking at. I didn't know I had a grand dog, but he, he has used as the focal point. And yeah, Glenna is our, Glenna is our hero today. Yay.
And, and you, you know how many times I read that book? I, the first, I wanted to read all that extra information because it's so great about it. And it was eight minutes and something long, and I'm going, no way. I can't even send this to anybody this long, so I had to keep doing it, and keep doing it, and keep doing it. It was fun.
Well, thank you for doing it.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you Glenna. I think that we are going to move into executive session to discuss a legal matter. But before we do that, I did want to read something to you by Mr. Eli Whistle that touches me in discussion to what we previously talked about. It says, "Sometimes we must interfere when human lives are endangered, when human dignity is in jeopardy, national borders and sensitivities become irrelevant. Whenever men or women are persecuted because of their race..." Sorry. "When men and women are persecuted because of their race, religion, or political views, that place at that moment becomes the center of the universe." And I think that that's where we are now and moving forward. And I just want to extend an appreciation to you all and your support. I just want to say thank you. So with that, we can move into executive session with, in regards to a legal matter with no action to follow.
Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Who was, was it Ashley? Thank you.
That was Ashley.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Okay.
And who's attending?
We're gonna have Glenna and Susan and Dorothy, if you don't mind, please.
Could I ask Sheila be in on that as well?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Oh, here we go. Okay.